Yeah, good to see you.
All right, I will call this discussion meeting fiscal year 2025 operational and maintenance and capital improvement budget plan workshop to order. Our first item of business is Mrs. Colvin has a couple items she wishes to talk about.
Just to bring you up to date on a few things, and I am adjusting the operating budget for all these great things that are happening. The health insurance rates came in, zero percent increase.
Yay!
We're budgeting temporary, that's about a million dollars between us and the schools.
That's phenomenal.
Y'all like that? Wow.
Lifesavers all around. Lifesavers all around.
Check to make sure they're healthy first.
Yeah, so that was very good news.
You guys said I did the green one.
We've been overpaying for the past couple of years.
No, our mod rates are coming down.
Because we've been overpaying.
We have healthy people.
Because we're healthier.
Yeah, well, part of that is your...
Well, we've been overpaying.
Your wellness.
You know what? I'm very happy. I mean, I've been happy with our rates the last couple of years, but I was very happy with that.
Good news.
That's good news.
Also, when you get the, I will bring a revised operating budget. I got so many changes coming in today, I just didn't get to get them all in, and I knew today was on, I'm sorry. I knew today was more on outside agencies, but Gordonsville Fire Department did make a request a little more than last year from eighty-five hundred to twenty, they wanted, they requested thirty-five thousand, one thirty, but the finance committee did recommend adding twenty thousand for them because they do a lot of calls in Louisa, so I am making that change if y'all are okay with that. And then there's a school emergency responder radio coverage system that's needed. I was adding that into the capital budget, and it'll be under the schools, one of their requests, so I've added that in as well. But we had net savings with all of that, so yay. And then I did talk to Jaunt. There will be a rebate in 25. It's thirty-two thousand, it's like thirty-two thousand five hundred, I don't have, thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so I'll take that off as well when y'all get your next, next budget work session, and I'll bring you more detail.
What's the rebate for?
They had some savings, like excess funding from twenty-three, and so when they do that, they did keep a little bit back for a capital project they're working on.
Sorry, you said Jaunt, not John.
Jaunt.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I heard you say John. I'm like, who is John and what are we saving? Jaunt, rebate, okay, very good.
Obviously, can't talk today because you said the exact same thing.
Jaunt, not John.
Jaunt, Jaunt, J-A-U-N-T, I apologize. And then the next up was you had asked that Fluvana Louisa Housing come and make a presentation tonight, and y'all can ask some questions.
All right, Kim, come on up.
I'm not used to this, usually I wait a little while. Good evening, everybody, great to see you. I'm going to find my clicker here.
Clicker's right here. Yep, right here on the corner up top. I got you.
Oh, right here.
Yep.
Okay, good, hopefully I don't hit the wrong button again. Wonderful to see you all. Appreciate you guys giving us some time. I know it's a big, big ask, but I'm going to go through some things that really explain why, what's been going on. First of all, I wanted to share with you guys, a huge philosophy for me is broken windows theory. I don't know if you all are familiar with that, you know, sort of disrepair and broken windows start to invite crime, and if you don't start changing some of those things around, it invites additional crime. So I think that's part of the function of what we serve in our community, so that's just sort of what I wanted to lead off with for you guys. Mr. Woodward, I'm not sure how much, and Mr. McCotter, I'm not sure how much you guys know about all of our services we offer, so I'm just going to put this up here real quickly.
I was very happy to attend your event at Caliopi, so I consider myself somewhat in the...
You are, you're a little more educated than a lot of people, and thank you for coming to that, we do appreciate it. It was good to see you, Ms. Jones there. But just to go through real quick, we do essential home repair, accessibility ramps, home construction, affordable rental units, and financial education. So I'm glad, I'm not going to go bore you guys with all of the details right now, but just to know that we do have five rather robust programs that we service for the community, and I'm going to go through some of the information. We do that with four staff right now. We are looking to, we would like to add two more people, mostly for operations, to oversee the construction projects that we have going on, and an administrative person to answer phones because of the volume of calls that we get, and farming those out and making sure those end up with the right people has taken a lot of demand on us. Annabelle Anderson is here with us today, who is our Louisa County Coordinator. I think you'll see that with adding her to our staff, it has made an enormous impact, and that's our biggest cost, is funding our staff. Just a broad overview, we did one hundred and twenty-five home repairs last year, about a four hundred and ten thousand dollars. We provided two hundred and eighty-two thousand in grants. We were awarded the well and septic swap grant at three hundred thousand dollars. You guys granted us the land in Louisa for our construction project. We also purchased land in Fluvana. We did forty-four lamp, ramp projects, really fifty-five in the calendar year, but we have almost completely obliterated our wait lists, and we sold two rental units.
Kim, before you go, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I saw you getting ready to click it. So the, the numbers you're giving us, so the one hundred and twenty-five home repairs to two hundred...
I'm going to break it down further.
Okay.
Yep. And we have been receiving a lot of statewide recognition. At that luncheon where we presented to, to the community, the Virginia Housing upper staff personnel were there, and they were floored. They expected that people were showing up to protest. They couldn't believe that everybody was there to support our project, so thank you all for helping that make hap, make that happen as well.
What were the protests?
Overall, we did twenty-nine, this is just a broad, you know, overview. I'm not going to go through, explain the numbers to you, I'm going to go through and tell you the, the specific ones for Louisa. This particular roof, this lady had, Annabelle, she had water actually coming through her walls and bubbling up behind her paint, so this is just an example of one. There's a, a few more where this lady has stage four brain cancer, and we had the kids from the Impact Program from the Baptist Church come do volunteer work, and we provided all the materials, and they rebuilt her porch.
Is that a six-eighteen?
This other one was a, a local trailer that they lost heat in air conditioning, so they were struggling to maintain, maintain heat. That's just an example of, you know, if you guys saw these every day. I did have, Annabelle brought a little pushpin map to show you, I'm bringing that up, to show you guys where all of these projects are going on throughout the county, because I think it really says a lot.
I'm going to bring it over to Christian. Yeah. Pass it around.
Sure.
It is COVID, so you can see what we've done in 2022, 2023, what's active right now.
So Chris Coon pointed out that if everybody knew all of the homes that we helped in the county, like you see Jaunt buses driving around, right, so you see them, if we had flags out in front of all of the houses we helped, people would realize how broad the impact is of what we're doing. So I thought this would help show you, all, it's all over the county, there's, that's, these are just since Annabelle started with us about a year and a half ago, so it's really extraordinary what she's been able to do. But twelve roofs, eleven HVAC units, twenty-seven either plumbing wells, septic and water-related issue repairs, elect, to electric, and three other additional major repairs. So it was, it came down to fifty-five projects at a hundred and ninety thousand. I don't think I updated those numbers, I apologize. But without the FLHF staff to help walk, walk people through the process, they wouldn't be getting this funding. We have to do an environmental review, and we have to submit a DHR, we have to have photos of the site, proof of income, right, we have to walk them through the application process, we submit that to TJPDC, we assist with contractors and quotes, then we get, you know, payment to the contractor, we get reimbursement if, for the grant funds, and then we loan the remaining portion. Without this, there are a lot of people who would not get repairs for their homes. They would have leaking roofs, they would have no heat because they can't qualify for a loan. These are, these are the lowest income people we have, they have to be below fifty percent AMI in order to qualify for our funds. We used to get some funding from a lot of, from, you know, specifically the HPG program, we get significantly more. It's a first come, first served for the five counties in the TJPDC district. We get the lion's share, we, we get more than half of it because we go after that money and we, and we provide it to local residents. The year before I came on, we got twenty-seven thousand, I think, and then last year we got almost a hundred thousand of just the HPG funds. So we're working very hard on getting other funding as well. We are in phase two of applying for HUD funds of five hundred thousand dollars for older adult home modification programs. We made it to phase two this go around, the first go around, HUD had these funds, they had fifteen million dollars for the entire country, they've doubled it to thirty million for the entire country, so that allowed us to make it through the next round. We're very hopeful if we get those funds, that would be an enormous help to the residents of Louisa County. Do you have other questions on that?
No ma'am, if you ask. We've done this enough now, you...
I love numbers, I'll talk to, talk numbers to you all day. This, you can see, as we added staff, I think you can really see the impact we've been able to create in the counties. Thank you.
This is very impressive.
Yeah, it's, it really is widespread.
Mm-hmm.
So over doubling the impact for, this is just repairs, of course, too, but I love this program because it is so broad reaching, it's for Louisa residents, we're really truly serving people to help keep them in their own homes and let them age in place. This one's even more impressive is what we've been able to obtain in grant funds, and this doesn't happen without Annabelle actually going through the process with people and meeting with them, going to their homes. It's very time consuming, labor intensive. So, you know, I show you these numbers, but I want you guys to understand the amount of work that goes into it and what it truly takes to bring those funds to the residents here and benefit them. But we were able to gain two hundred and eighty-two thousand in grant funds alone last year, and literally seven times what we were, what we were receiving before. These are just ramps placed. Tom Payne, who, I know you know Christian, former board supervisor from Fluvana County, he's eighty-two, he goes around and he services not just Fluvana, but everyone in Louisa County. He goes and makes measurements at people's homes and figures out what ramp parts we need to order, then he gets a group together and he puts them up for people. So we're trying to increase the number of volunteers who are involved in that. It takes a little bit of knowledge, but, you know, most people, it, they're kind of like Legos, you can figure out how to put them together. Again, those are about thirty-five hundred dollars per location, so we have probably, we know there's at least two hundred, some we've lost track of because it's a difficult program, people die, they don't get in touch with us to pick them up, they change their phone numbers, you know, it's, it's difficult, but we do know where most of them are, and we have over two hundred ramps out in the community.
And is it also that it is thirty-five, about thirty-five hundred dollars which you have in it, but you're not spending thirty-five hundred, because a lot of them you're, you're removing and...
We do, when we're able to pick them up.
Recycling and stuff like that, yes.
Yes, yeah. I just wanted you guys to understand the, the value of the ramps because a lot of people, particularly people who we've delivered them to, don't understand how much those cost. They're not a throwaway item.
I've seen you about twenty customers a year, so I know.
Yeah. We get a lot, we get a lot, we appreciate, and that doesn't, that's not even the wood ramps, so these are just the aluminum ones. How are we, so what I really wanted to do to augment our programming to is increasing homeownership in Louisa County. How do we help our future home buyers? So in conjunction with the Louisa Chamber of Commerce, we're putting on a program on March twenty-seventh, and it'll be limited to about fifteen people. We're going to guide them through the process, we're going to bring in a mortgage broker who is certified to teach the first time home buyer program for Virginia Housing, which would access Spark Funds for them, PHA, who can also help us with down payment assistance and different programs that people can access, walk them through the credit counseling, budgeting, so really all the tools people need. There are a lot of people who, who show up and say, I want to buy a house, they don't know what they're talking about yet, so we educate them and help them get on that path so that they can actually get to a point where they can purchase a house. Of course, it's becoming a lot, you know, more of a struggle because of the cost of housing that has been rising, but I'll address that in a minute. And we're also, we're encouraging Annabelle and our other coordinator to get HUD certified, as a HUD certified counselor, that'll give us additional options. Of course, that takes time out of their schedule to become trained, but it is a Virginia Housing certified course, and that would give us access to additional funds that we can then pass on to Louisa County residents. Update on the construction progress at Louisa, at the Resource Council and Chalk Level. This was our original plan. This is a little bit confusing to read, but this is our wetlands impact. And if you go, I can go back, right, so if you look at this plan, and then look at the next one, so all of this area is all wetlands, so it forms a nice C shape around that property. So we went back to the drawing board with the engineers, and we came up with a new plan. The striped portion is the wetlands impact area, which we've been able to minimize to point three acres. So this is our new design, has the same number of units, you can see we kind of slid things down a little bit to, to fit them all in the property. Malachi Mills did a great job for R-K and K, getting everything finessed and put into place. We've met with the engineer again to get final plans for this project, and Josh Gillespie and Tom Eglin to move that forward as well, and get our plan onto the final steps so that we can break ground. So we're hoping for end of summer when we can break ground. As I said, wetlands mitigation is point three acres. Railroad has reached out to us on our application to ascertain possession of the water and sewer lines, and we are working with Louisa County Water Authority to verify the responsibilities of, of those lines and where those, where those change, and who's going to be maintaining the pump grinder system. We were required to do a phase one archaeological survey, Department of Historic Resources came back and said we had to do a phase one archaeological survey, which is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. I accumulated data from it being next to the railroad. Lloyd Runnett told me they used the house that was on that property as a fire and rescue practice back in the seventies, it's been timbered, so I put all the data in the soil and water, soil and erosion control evidence together for them, they came back and reversed their decision and said, we don't need to do one, so that was good news. We do have several quotes in for modular construction, we're also looking at panelized, so we're trying to optimize the costs, the speed of getting units put in there because we need them yesterday, and also, you know, keeping people in the community engaged because there are people who want to work on these. As I said, final engineering plan is in process with R-K and K, so we can get to excavation bids and land disturbance permits, which I was saying, we, we just met with Josh and Tom, and we're working on securing funding for the next phases so we can get the entire project completed as quickly as possible. We are shifting from about a million dollar budget to over three million dollar budget with all of this construction. So fortunately, we've streamlined the organization over the past few years, that's really prepared us for this next step. Administrative funding is our biggest gap, there aren't other options to get funding like grants for administrative costs for overhead, so we're really asking the county to invest in us the way we've invested in the county. So we have outlaid expenses to add personnel, which has really proven to be a benefit to everyone in the county, it's helping more people, we're able to access more grant funds, but we still run very, very lean. We work a lot of hours, don't we? But the impact has really been significant. We do have a lot of issues that have come up the past few years with a continuing, growing portion of the population that is aging, people who are aging in place, so you don't have the turnover of homes, so it's a change in the demographics where we don't have normal turnover that would have gone to the next generation, so we're trying to find as many solutions to that as possible to help younger folks get into housing and to help older folks stay in their homes. And I think that will help when we have our one bedroom units, we'll be able to get some seniors who want to stay local, who don't want to maintain a three bedroom home, to move over to one of these smaller units. This is just a comparison, I showed you guys this last year with where we are, you guys have stepped up the past year, and really that's caused, that's helped us out a lot with our bottom line. We do have an administrative shortfall, though, in our numbers, this is another, this is just showing that funding from the county has remained flat or decreased the past almost thirty years. So since Howard Evergreen started, he did an amazing job, we really haven't seen an increase from the county, so it, we actually decreased in two thousand and ten to the twenty-five thousand, six fifty, and then you guys raised it last year to forty-five thousand. I know we're asking for a lot, I think it's my next one that has, here's the, here's our administrative breakout. So we are able to sustain this for a short period of time, a lot of it's because of how Howard set this up, it has really helped us, but we will continue to cannibalize our own funds if we don't have the county supporting us in what we're doing. We're using funds that we would either, there are funds that we can't use for administrative because it has to be rolled into new construction. There's also funding that we, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. I forgot how I was going to say it. We, we are able to, to sustain a very short term outlay, but if you want the Housing Foundation to continue to provide for the county, I think we're reaching a point where we are, we're going to maintain something steady, it won't continue to rise and rise and rise like we have the past couple of years, we will sustain a level that will keep people in their homes and will help, and will help people locally. I don't expect this to be a regular increase that we're going to ask you for more and more every year, but I do think you guys should consider, there's organizations like Jaunt, right, that has four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right, you see their, you see the trucks, the vans going around town, we have JABA, we have other organizations with much higher budget asks, and I think we're more in that category of what we are providing to the community. We're not providing a small thing, it's housing that we are continuing to assist with, and that's a major ask right now with the number of different, let me, so we have a lot of pinch points in the community, particularly Louisa has a very unique set of circumstances. We have Richmond, we have Charlottesville, and most of all, we have Northern Virginia pushing in on us. So that's putting people who are already on the margins further into a difficult situation. They are dri, it's driving the cost of land up, you guys, this is nothing new, you guys deal with this more than anybody. Everybody has their eye on Louisa County, they love it, it's a great place to live, but that land and housing prices have dramatically increased the past few years. We do have a multi-pronged approach, we service a lot of different needs, and we have been a proven organization who's been here for a lot of years, and I think we have really proven our accountability and our transparency and integrity the past couple of years and how we operate. I've said this before to you guys, we're a nonprofit, it's a tax status, not a business model, we continue to invest in the community, the profit goes to the community, they're the ones who receive the benefit of this, but you need to run this like a business, or you, you can't sustain it forever. We've had a lot of different increasing expenses, just like everybody has, increase our audit, taxes, office supplies, you name it. Our rental property income has decreased, we've sold some units, and because our units are drastically aging, and that's where we get a lot of our, the portion where we're able to self-sustain, we use income from our rental properties, they are heavily aging and have required major repairs. So we've had, we typically spend about thirty-five thousand dollars a year in maintenance of our rental properties. As of this fiscal year, which started July first to now, we're at ninety thousand because we've had major damage and major repairs on units that are twenty-plus years old roofs, the units that are on South Street have had major, you didn't build those, did you? Somebody else said. One of the HVAC units was leaking, and during COVID, there was an older gentleman who lived there, he didn't know to tell us, and we didn't have access to the unit, so there was heavy floor damage. So we've had that under repair, we're about to put a new tenant in that, in that location as well. But just, you know, a lot of replacing flooring, what else, a couple of units where we've had to do major gut jobs.
Just everything's kind of...
Yep, a lot, a lot of huge ones. Are the return on investment...
Kim, I'll just remind you, we're at a hard stop at five.
Okay, all right. I think I'm almost done. We can get additional funding if we have the staff to do it, you know, we've talked about CDBG, Howard did that before, was able to fix ten homes for five hundred thousand dollars. We can't fix ten homes for five hundred thousand dollars anymore, but I think we can fix a number of homes, and we can apply for up to a million dollars in CDBG funds. I'm sure you're thrilled to hear about that. There's a lot of quantifiable return on investment to the Housing Foundation for the county, through home repairs, we don't have, have to make the investment in the Housing Department, we can get additional funding, we have construction going on that will help workforce and seniors, there's a lot of unquantifiable return on investment. That's really all I had, just kind of, we have a April sixth, Southern Revere, we have a five K, ten K fundraiser going on where they wanted us to be the beneficiaries. We've had a lot more community engagement, which is great, people are understanding that we serve local people, so they're very happy to support us, and I think we've done a better job of reaching out to the community. We have a new eBlast system, we're able to keep people informed, having to reinvest in our organization in loan software and accounting, so those are other increased costs. That's about, I'm glad to answer any questions you guys have.
Does anybody, we have about a minute and a half, does anybody have any questions or any comments they'd like to make?
Real quick, two staff or three staff? You said two staff to oversee construction projects, one to administer, for administration?
For new?
Yeah.
Yes, two new.
Two total?
Yes. Yep.
How many hours a week are over the forty hours are, is your current staff working to maintain the level of what is happening?
That's a good question. We don't, we don't have everybody clock in and out, they work a lot of extra hours, you know, evenings...
Yeah.
You know, going to take pictures before, you know, before they come in the office, meeting with people, so it's difficult to, they're probably fifty hours a week, so there's, there is a lot of burnout from having to deal with the needs. They have drastically increased, we have constantly people coming to the door, having needs that, you know, homeless people, it has drastically increased. We don't service that as well, but we do, Annabelle sits down with everybody who comes to the door who's homeless, who needs help, and tries to formulate a plan for them.
That's good to know.
Anything else? All right, Kim, thank you very much for, and you were perfect on time, we had about forty seconds to spare, so.
Great, I liked it.
Thank you, Kim, for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, so we'll wait until five, according to our bylaws, to open the meeting, then go into closed session.